You get little balls of ice, you're actually skiing on little balls of ice.
Corns.
Yeah.
Yes.
Corn snow, I've never heard of that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's for the summer, or in the spring, you eat the corn.
Yeah, okay.
I'm interested.
No, I don't want AI. All right. What were they put together back? Where it belongs?
Well, what's that?
Uh, I think it's just sort of a, instead of a spinning circle, it's something else.
But are you, are you eleven now?
This is an iPad, so.
Oh, good question.
I wouldn't know any.
All right. You can tell some people. Tell me how it is. All right, I don't want. We'll see ourselves. Okay, uh. I believe we were talking about setbacks when we last got together.
Yes.
So I put my email, I did check with Kevin, he thought it had all three in there, but it only has one. So. I think would be. Why, as far as to go ahead and. Put in side, rear, and front?
Yes.
What page is that?
Trying to get my system back up, you crashed on me.
Try page twelve, Bill. See signs. Right before sign. Right?
Oh, yeah, okay. There's a lot of. I got. So what were we gonna add?
The distance in feet from the. Right of way street line or property line to the side, rear, or front.
Oh, okay. Well, wooden property line, you put that.
Property line goes all the way around. Yeah, but we also have some of those property lines that go out. To the high water mark. So is setback measured from the high water mark, or is it? In that instance on the beach, or is it measured?
Oh, if it goes to the high water mark, that's the problem.
Yeah.
So wherever the high water mark is.
But theoretically, it could, those people. You know, the structure twenty-five feet from the high water line? Which is out on the beach.
No.
Here? Run next door and ask Kevin.
Right.
He said?
No, I don't think it could though. I think, didn't we decide at the end of the meeting that we needed to define setback? Three different setbacks because they vary, whether it's the property setback, or, or the, or the easement setback, or the roads setback. So I think we decided we needed to decide it.
And it goes.
Several different.
There's a little dictionary, there's. Couple pages of setback. And, you know, minimum distance. Just plain setback and this minimum distance by which any building or structure must be separated. From a street right away or a lot line. Talk about falls. I'll do that stuff. Well, just.
Put your fingers to the weapon.
Yeah.
I think Kevin might have actually emailed you.
Do you want to just walk next door? Yes.
Thank you. We have a strange question. We're looking at setbacks. And setback is from the property line to the edge of the building. But if you own. A lot on the beach and your property line is a high water mark. Would you technically feel twenty feet from the height, height right on the beach?
Technically, that would be a lot if it wasn't for Seahaw, Coastal Ocean High Hazard Area, it's, it almost, it actually definitely makes it impossible. Uh, so even though your local lets you do it, uh, Seahaw makes it impossible, you would never be allowed to put a permanent structure in the Seahaw area.
Okay. All right.
Thanks, Kevin.
Yeah, no problem. If anything else, let me know.
That's good, man. But I, I, I think we need.
You'll see hog section. Well, I guess that's the word.
I, I do think we need rear setbacks, side setbacks, yes.
Property line. Well, rear, rear is property line, right?
Well, rear is all four sides, property line is all four sides, right?
Uh, yeah, I see the logic for the well, the thing is that.
In the book, on page three, this one, I think, it's at like five or six pages on the CD. Uh, setback front on corner. Which you've had a couple.
Yeah.
Yeah, with the police talk.
Right.
Do we want that here, or do we want that?
Yeah.
My neighbor put setback.
And setback from the corner.
Oh, yeah.
Right, but that would, that's farther down. There's a separate one for a setback.
Sure, it would be. Right underneath setback, cause you get setback.
Right.
Corner, setback, rear, setback. Side.
Oh, would you provide all of those definitions then separately?
Oh. That's a deviant, but.
Well, our thought was last week, it would make it easier for. For the people trying to figure out what they're gonna do with their house.
Right.
Which is.
To under subjective.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're gonna approach it in that way, then.
Well, this is a. On our game. You guys gonna?
I guess my question is, are we gonna put that under lot or under setback?
I would put it on setback.
Okay. So are we done with lot, or we're still working on lot? I'm, I'm confused, cause we went from L to S.
Oh, I agree.
So how?
That's where we left.
I know, but all of a sudden he's talking about setbacks, which is under S, so I'm confused.
I mean, we left opposite.
Did you miss the last meeting?
I thought we left at lot.
No.
No, well, the line I, I drew on my, my hard copy was. Stop on October twentieth, that's setback.
Okay.
Then that leads us to. So I, which definitions we wanna use? I do have. My book here.
My goal is to keep things simple.
Okay, so how? How do you want it?
Well, that first schedule shouldn't be led.
Yeah. Simple enough, simple, if you're just gonna add those. Instead of side, rear, and.
Yes.
All right, what's your? Under.
So Kevin thought there were definitions for front, side, and rear setback.
Yes.
That's how he responded. Front, side, and rear setback.
So do we wanna go with three, or do we just wanna have one general?
You, you could do one and include all three parameters in the one. If, if that's the way you wanna go, cause, so what is it, it's twelve and a half feet, it's, it's front is twenty-five feet, correct? And, and rear and side are twelve and a half?
Well, twelve and a half. But it can also be reduced to ten percent of the lot width. So if you're working with an undersized lot that's sixty feet wide or forty feet wide, it could be four feet.
Yeah.
On either side.
Numbered streets are, wow.
Yeah.
So the setback would be reduced?
Well, yeah. Not the setback, the side setbacks are. Are the fronts also? Do we have any lots that are that shallow? We probably do.
I don't think they're give you a front one without going berserk, but the. Banner. Or side is ten percent of the lot, if it's a sub-stated lot. So you got four foot lot, then you got four feet on each.
Four feet, yeah.
Where normally it would be twelve and a half, twelve and a half.
Right, that's huge.
That's huge.
Yeah, well, if you go down the numbers, you'd just see some.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Uh, we've got one before us.
Right, we do.
But the, you know, I, I didn't know that part of it, so. I think it's a good thing to put it in here, it may seem too weedy, but it is definitions, right?
Well, but I don't think we wanna start. Butting the definitions with the rules.
Okay.
Okay.
Cause it'll be further defined in the rules.
Right.
Say how it's measured.
Right.
As a.
So it's a distance.
That way you can change the rules without changing.
Right, so the distance in feet measured from the property line to the rear side of the building.
Just define the rules.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, so. Again. One general or?
Yeah, one general is what I'm hearing.
Well.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, the distance in feet measured, uh, from the front comma, rear comma, or side.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know what the.
Yeah.
All right.
So are we changing it from right of line? Right of way line slash?
Street line or property line to the structure?
No, I think it's from all of those to the front, side, or rear.
Let's go with that for now, and. If there's a problem that we can hold in back, that. They sign, signs everywhere, sign. Like that song.
Mm-hmm.
Especially if you're wearing a ball hat.
I grasp and. I just, I just wear that one voice.
Both signs include flags?
Never heard of that.
There was a flag.
It says here on the planner's dictionary, the term sign shall not include any flag.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, we separately have flat, don't we?
Yes, we have regulations on. Banners and.
And flags.
They can be put up for, and how long they can stay up.
Oh, here, here it says it does not include the flag or insignia of any nation.
Nations.
Yeah.
Or of any political education.
Yeah.
That's flags mounted on a sign is what they're trying to say.
We did not define flag separately up above.
Like rules anywhere?
There are.
Yes, sizes.
And does a sign include a mural?
Yeah, if you put your name on it. Because, uh. Down there at Jack's. We had to caution her, and she wanted to put that big mural on that, and she's already over. Limit on signage. But there's this name on it that was a sign.
If you don't, you can do a beautiful mural, well, the company name is not a sign. Okay.
And that's what she did. Whether it's beautiful or not, I really haven't paid attention.
Yeah. So that mural on the, uh. In, in, in front of the marina by the mall house, does that have Caitlin's name on it or what?
What's your?
By the mall house, the mural of the.
I believe so.
No.
No?
No, that's paid for and put up by the stock society. There's another one here, it's on page three sixty, any writing including letterwork or mumble, victorial presentation, including illustration or decoration, envelope, including device, symbol, trademark, flag, including banner, or pennant, or any other. Figure or symbol character that one is a structure or part thereof, or is attached to, painted on, or in any other manner represented on a building or other structure. Two, used it to announce direct attention to or advertise. And three, is visible from outside the building, a sign includes writing, representation, or other figures, a symbol or characters within a building, only when eliminated and located in a window, so if you. Your beer sign.
Yeah, yeah.
I do know that banners are. Discussed later because when, uh, Peak. Put their. Four by fours out there, had a banner stretched between them.
Right. Have to be spot.
They, they exceeded the time and it. Wasn't, they didn't have. Permission to put it up in the first place.
How about the signs you see occasionally stuck in the ground, uh, by, like at the four corners of stuff, four style sign? Or the barbecues and the. In the festivals and the. Cause I've seen some that, the gutter guy that.
Right, uh, like down here, it's a back outing, she has one out, uh, for sushi. By the way, tomorrow, ten o'clock, she opens the window, it's the last weekend of his sushi.
But that's different, cause that's on. You're talking about the ones that are on the.
People go on and stick in the ground.
Right, like it.
And. Right. Roofing.
Yeah. Roofing and.
All those.
Yeah.
I, I think Kevin goes around and grabs them once.
Once around, you gotta be careful. There've been some case law about freedom of speech, blah, 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 but, yeah.
Indecently, political is not, is probably exempt.
Yeah. Right, except. There's a window.
Yeah, it has to be removed by a certain amount.
Okay.
Yeah.
You can put them up more than thirty days before the election, and they have to come down within a week.
Right. Okay. And is that, is that? In our rules, or is that a county or state or?
State. But I, I, I do commend all the people. I think all the, uh, local campaign signs keep down.
All gone this morning, yeah, I was impressed.
Well, I was able to wake up at seven, and then run out at eight thirty to get in, and there we go.
Even the big banner picture ones will.
Yeah. So one ninety twenty-six has design regulations.
I'll be reading that tonight. Some of the self-interest, well, you're probably.
Well, signs in residential districts. General business districts, industrial districts, representational signs, billboards, projecting signs, exemptions. Banners.
Yeah.
Okay. And keep the existing words, those, uh, the comma between working and model probably doesn't belong there, it probably was intended to be working model. Or. On the third line.
Yes.
Yeah.
Trying to change it and it's.
Yeah, I see, the second line.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hang on a minute, I'm trying to make it and it's.
He's doing something, I can see it.
Yeah.
Oh, that changes the songs.
We go on sign now?
Yeah.
Steve?
I'm, I'm just, you know, we define neon to fluorescent to. But we don't mention LEDs, it says.
And I got a little confused on where it gets to, or string of lights outlining, or hung upon any part of the bill, Christmas lights.
Well, that are just those. Those lights that get strung around now.
Yeah.
You know, that is signage.
Yeah, so the, the woman who's got the Mexican restaurant here at Leoni, she's got the, uh. The changing colors stuff, is that signage?
And that's what I'm asking.
It's annoying.
It's annoying.
Well, I, I didn't say it's not, more than not.
According to this definition, it is, it's outlining or hung upon any part of the building.
Right, so I think the warranty has like, uh, on layers now.
Who does? Six fifty.
It's, it's getting out of control. I mean, my only reason for mentioning LEDs is just to update it, that's. Just.
Yeah, or, I mean, or is it more generic all the way, and just say, the sign includes any.
Any artificial.
Any source of artificial light.
I, we could.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
That's much better.
Yeah.
So that will strike it.
A sign includes.
Hang on, I, I just got a. I, I'm not used to using this.
Leader line.
On the iPad.
No, the, I'm used to using Google Docs, not Microsoft, so I don't.
Oh.
I'm really, really good at editing on Google Docs, not on this, so.
I grew up with Word.
Okay.
I grew up with cursing.
Well, you put a, you put a word, it was very perfect.
A, a sign including billboard and. Any other artificial light or string lights.
Now, any other, other, any other source of artificial light, outlining or hung upon.
I'm trying.
Oh, okay, you're gonna do the follow.
I can't type like, uh, and then get rid of. Everything else to outlining.
Yeah. A sign includes any. Billboard or. Source of artificial light. Outlining or hung upon.
Source of artificial light, okay.
I think that's have any part of a, of building, because that's, we have examples of where that's happened. That's worse, oh, yeah.
But it's, is, but if you read into it.
Yeah.
It's not. It's not marking or representation or making an announcement, so it actually, Christmas lights don't. Count as.
Signage.
Signage.
The lighting has to be part of the sign.
And I think the lights at the Mexican place.
Is a declaration.
Is a decoration, yes. And it's not considered a sign.
Okay, you gotta read the.
That, that's kind of how I interpret it.
The part where it says it's the nature of an announcement or direction or anything.
Yeah.
Is that, and at the bottom of that? Is that M at the bottom of advertising sign, sign ad advertising at the that M at the very end, is that just online or is that on? There is also.
At the end of if at all.
Yes.
I don't have an M.
Uh there you go, Janine, the sign area includes all decorations and lights.
Well, if it's in the sign, but if it's not. The sign.
It's just, if it's just light.
If it's just light.
But if it's light on the sign.
That's correct, that's different.
Okay, all right, just being corrected.
So if you had Christmas lights with Captain Jack's logo hung from it, that would be a sign. But without the logo, it's just a decoration. That's all I see.
Okay. So at the end of sign area, we run into those words again about neon too.
I'm gonna change that to. Others or any source of artificial lights.
Yes. Do we really mean that though? Any any source of artificial light?
That's in the sign.
Actually use that expression here on sign directly illuminated, next step. Any sign, a sign that incorporates any artificial lighting. Directly eliminate. In fact, all these I see. Artificial lighting. Maybe that got changed the last time. So does that mean that if I have a regular unlit business sign? But I've got a light over here that shines on that sign. That I have an extra. Square foot. With a with a light? Because of the light.
Well, here, it's an indirectly illuminated sign. A sign illuminated with an artificial light which is separated from or is not an intrinsic part of the sign itself.
Okay. Let's try. All right.
I mean, I probably wouldn't change any other.
No.
Of the sign.
I would agree. So single ownership, are we supposed to look at that? Why is it? Single ownership. Under directly illuminated, the word four in the second line doesn't make sense, which depends. For its illumination depends. Which depends, or maybe it's okay. Just reads to a valid. Why, why define it?
You're on.
You're still on direct.
Or it's illumination of uh.
And for its illumination and. Then it means.
I think either one is probably medically correct.
Too much detail.
Because or it's illumination upon transferred.
I think you could just end it at. A sign with the definition of a sign directly illuminated is a sign which incorporates any artificial lighting is an inherent part or feature. Yes.
So you want me to?
Period after feature.
Okay. Is that an incomplete sentence now?
Well.
Part or feature of the sign? Or can we just say?
You know, the definitions have to be complete sentences. Only if you want to put a period if you.
Sign which incorporates any ar- artificial lighting as an inherent part or feature. And that to me it's an incomplete statement.
Right. Okay, how about any um uh inherent part or feature for illumination?
It did put a s- a space between for illumination and it doesn't look like it, but.
Does you.
Okay. Are we moving on? Are we moving on?
To single ownership.
That with um. The other signs.
Yeah.
All right, single ownership.
What's the purpose of that?
That was my question.
Yeah.
Is that in yellow because somebody put it in there?
It must be.
It's a change.
If it was red, it would have been added by Kevin.
Right.
If it was black, it was there originally.
Added by.
I mean, the planning dictionary doesn't have a definition for single ownership. It's like in multiple places.
Yeah, it seems odd because there's, you know. Oh, there's nothing that says about. Multiple.
Uh we got ownership symbol.
Oh, is that how it is, okay.
Two ninety two. Holding record title possession under a contract to purchase or. Possession under a lease by a person or firm. Corporation or partnership individually, jointly in common or in any other manner. Where the property is or will be under unitary or unified control.
We have another ownership definition. Yeah, what other forms of ownership exist, it includes all of those.
Well, there's ownership common. Ownership common, ownership by one or individual entities. In any form of ownership of two or more contentious lots. Ownership by any association such a ownership may be.
condo, I think. Condos.
But I don't see a common though.
Well, the common areas. The common areas are owned by the HOAs technically. Which is a entity.
Right.
Like an LLC or or corporation. Do we have any other forms of ownership identified or defined? No. Well, it's more ownership. And and unless it starts with another word. Other than ownership. And I'm just, and and is the definition, the magic book definition, does it have? Does it have a lease of not less than thirty years? Does it also include a lease term not less than thirty years in your? In your magic definition?
In this definition, uh it. Does or possession under a lease.
Unreleased. Without specifics on terms, yeah. I'd say we'll just give it a pass until we find out why it's in there in the first place and we'll see it through reviewing the rules, it'll show up. Yeah, maybe we just leave a question mark hanging there and. Not sure how that. Or who put it. Or who highlighted it, yeah. We, does the highlight mean that someone thought we need, they needed to add it maybe?
I I believe that means that the people who work with the elderly are the add it.
Okay.
I will talk to Kevin tomorrow. Back to everybody. Skate rink. Oh, we had a ice skate rink.
Try it again.
Gate rink, we had a s- ice skating rink for a couple of years, but. It never worked out.
No.
Is now part of Prinzers and. So that's used for storage.
We've got this thing called a bay out here that who's just in a regularly debate.
Story.
That part of a book read to a child, no.
Sometimes has pictures.
That's for real, it says today.
Changes. Sounds good to me.
Straight with makes sense.
Didn't we struggle with something close to being structure with that building? Is there ever a time that a building is not a structure or a structure that would fit the building definition? Now, structure is saying would be. Doesn't care. All kinds of things. Yeah, okay, all right. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think a building needs to have four sides. That are at a roof.
There is no such things.
We need a teacher.
No.
A little lending libraries that the neighborhood association puts out.
The sharing library, is that what they call it?
We took those in. They emptied out all of them. Two days later, I go pull them out of the ground, so people would put books back in.
They thought they were empty.
Do you need to pull them out in the winter, will they, will the books get wet and some?
So we had to have them out for the winter. So they're, they're sitting on a pallet in our warehouse.
Is that a a village thing that says they have?
Uh it's the um neighborhood association.
Ah, okay. Where do those get housed, just for me? For a for a random thought, where where do they get stored? Over the winter.
On a pallet.
In his uh.
In our warehouse.
In the warehouse.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe maybe next year, maybe just store them in the information booth because it's closed anyway. But for this year, they're on a pallet, on a rack. Uh uh straight with structure, no, it exists today.
Yeah.
Do we want to add, Ellen had some said something about, you know, cold plunge pools? Do we need to add cold plunge pools?
That doesn't sound like fun at all, it is cold plunge pool.
It's supposed to, it's a lot of athletes use it. To help recovery and and recovery of muscles and.
It's deeper.
It's kind of the answer with a hot tub.
Yeah, okay.
I mean.
So this definition shall include hot tubs, plunge pools and the like?
Yes.
Or. Yeah, it's it's if that is located outside. It says which is located outdoors. But they only that case where, right, you have. One in the back here.
And I had a question under swimming pool portable. It says or whose depth is less than twenty four inches?
You know, there's more plastic things. You know, those little plastic things.
But there's, okay. But there's portable hot tubs.
But they're over twenty-four inches.
They are, but shouldn't we say, okay? It, but it says or not and. So if you have a portable hot tub, does it fall under portable swimming pool?
No.
Or just plain old swimming pool, yeah.
So for me, the portable swimming pool is confusing.
Yes.
Well, we could say this definition includes hot tubs, stationary and portable.
No, I don't think you need. You've got that in the first swimming. So the 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 definer here is twenty-four, exactly. One, the swimming pool is anything over twenty-four inches. The swimming pool portable is anything under twenty.
Okay.
Get your winner? Yep. Delivered.
There you go.
All parties are happy. Reserved, uh, that's coming. Take your orders.
Not very high places are open.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, by the way, is, if anybody is interested, I am sitting above the stage. It used to be a theater here.
Oh, is that right?
They found that when they were expecting to be.
So that were there no stairs that you, were the front stairs out there then?
I have no idea, yeah.
But I'm told if the stage is down there, uh, forced. This is also a laundry matter.
I remember it was a laundry. Don't remember it as a deal.
I'll confirm it with the historical society.
Janine, I don't like the word, in swimming pool portable, I don't like the word thereof.
Well, that, I I think what I'm struggling with, it, it's very confusing the way it reads.
Yes. A swimming pool or other artificial body of water. Which can be transported, uh, or artificial. Containment or.
Uh, see. Or whose depth is less than twenty-four inches.
But again, it's it's an or whose depth as opposed to an and whose depth.
So you're 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 phrasing artificial body of water copies the swimming pool of above. So if you just said a swimming pool or artificial body of water, which can be transported, whose depth is less than twenty-four is consistent with. Is it and whose depth is less than twenty-four?
That was my question.
I would go with.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I was.
Because it's either greater than twenty-four or it's less than twenty-four.
Why don't we stop there?
Yeah, thank you. This is riveting stuff.
We got three.
And I hope, I hope I did this right, because this is new for me.
Well. Now, those.
Just make sure, is there a save, close save?
It saves it automatically supposedly.
Yeah, that's all.
Is there any update on the election results or is it too soon?
No, I checked when I came in, I checked two or three times today. Other than the ones that were electronic, we counted because they were already on the ballot. We, if we're right, we'll find out tomorrow.
Oh, yeah.
Otherwise, probably private. I can't imagine. There's more than a couple hundred, like three hundred.
Yeah, somebody said.
I heard three twenty-three.
Yeah, in the quarter.
To be reviewed by some democratic person and then a Republican person.
Right, yeah.
That was largely occurring as part of that.
No, yeah, but the count.
The count.
Of the count.
Yeah. And then if it's close, then, yeah, I think it's triple. I think there's like an overall and then it's reviewed by the, a democratic person and then by a Republican representative.
And my working families, they don't, they don't get a shot at it?
No, if, you know, in order to be part of the election process, you have to either be registered Democrat or Republican.
Oh, really?
That's one of the reasons I registered, because I thought of doing that, it may have changed, this was years ago. But you either had to be a registered Democrat or. They do have data on the Village websites.
I would be glad to sell. But they. Those are likely pestering people.
There is a.
Okay, it is, it is magic hour.
Okay.
We're gonna go ahead and begin. Uh, since we don't have name tags, I'll start, I'm versing her.
Steve Taylor.
Bill Kathy.
Janine Gregory.
Bill McKee.
Linda Youngman.
Okay, we do have a forum. Uh, this was advertised in the Queen Times and posted on the Village website. If we start with the review of the two opportunities. Uh, minutes.
I didn't get any changes to, I sent it around and I'm getting my comments banned. I move that we accept the minutes that were submitted.
I second that.
Alright. Any discussion? Alright. All those in favor, say aye. Was it posed? They've been approved. Thank you again. Alright, start with converse. Make yourself at home.
Well, it's a chair, I'm gonna stand.
Uh, I can stand.
Okay.
Tried to stand.
Okay.
Yeah, many years. Uh, you want me to let you know what we're.
Just, uh.
Okay. Uh, so we've been through this once before and I guess I'd open up by saying this. Demonstration how the process does work, because we've learned through the first go around by getting our. Architect, uh, architectally stamped plans that we need to have a little. Or depth, uh, along the north side of the. Addition to accommodate the foundation on both sides, so. Uh, we're gonna do posts for the foundation now and we're asking for rather than the ten feet that was originally discussed, eleven and a half feet. On that north side.
And this has already been reviewed by the planning board and blessed by them.
Zoning, zoning board?
Yes, thank you, I agree, nice.
So this has been approved by zoning board?
Yes.
Just have gone to zoning and zoning blessed it?
Right.
Yes, and I double check that will happen today. And I have a copy of the original letter if you want.
Original letter?
From that they submitted in their original.
Yeah, I did this, I did this.
For the ten feet.
Yeah, so it was, well, we approved instead of twenty-six or instead of. Twenty-six point two by eleven point five was nineteen point one two five, right? So that's a change from what we approved.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And then also the lot density change.
Wrong, right, it was thirty-two percent, it's now thirty-five point seven, we approved the thirty-two percent. And there was no garage.
Uh, there was no new garage, correct, and so. As the other addition is a variance for replacing garage in existing footprint. Two stories versus existing single story. Will be attached outdoor shower as shown enclosure one.
Mark, what's your intention with the second floor of the new garage?
The intention there is to be for art and or office use only, they use only.
And how's it gonna be finished up there? Is it just raw space or is it, I'm sorry, is it just, uh? Is it just space or is there a restroom, is there a?
Uh, yes.
What sort of utilities are up there?
There is, there is, our plan is to put a, a simple bathroom up there, yes. That would be it, and the entire cottage is is only a three season cottage, so. We're not doing any, uh, you know, full year round heater, et cetera, energy throughout the entire property.
So that's.
Three seasons.
So the cottage is still eight hundred and six square feet?
Cottage.
I'm just looking here.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, right, so my calculations there, yes.
But you're not conditioning that space in the garage?
Well, we may plan for a fan or a window unit or something, window air conditioner, something like that.
Okay, not a, not a central unit.
No, no.
So outdoor shower gonna have heated water?
I don't know.
I'm joking.
I mean, welcome to come by, check, but.
Do it, do it if you can. For voters, they make little solar powered, um, bags.
Oh, right, right, right.
They're black bags and they just.
Heat in the sun, on a gravity fed.
When I was in the Bahamas, that's what we used.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I had to play with bags, they were barrels.
So I think the drawings have, the revised drawings, I think, show.
Yes, this shows a broad and existing footprint, no change to that footprint and and, uh. Getting a change is going to two stories and then this little outdoor shower tech, tech department.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I have to go through the question. I don't need it.
I have, are the names aware of the changes?
They are.
Any concerns?
No.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Well, we have another motion.
I move that we accept the final site plan. For seven five eight three Second Street to construct a second story rear addition. Twenty-six point two feet by eleven point five feet. One point five feet from north property line where five foot is required allowing thirty-five point seven percent lock coverage where thirty percent is allowed. And also constructing a two story garage on existing footprint. One point one feet from south property line where five feet is required. And five point five feet from west property line where twelve point five is required.
I'll second that. This notion?
Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Well, opposition is approved. See Kevin, uh, when you get a chance.
Start.
See Kevin, you get your.
I will, yes, I spoke with him earlier, so.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate your help, very much.
My, this, now it's the last name, I apologize, Chavontes?
Hi, how are you? Good, how are you guys? So, welcome back.
Thank you.
Well, last time was digital, but it's kind of personal. Um, just getting final approval for the lot, but. Um, I think we can forward everything including a hundred yard of frontage in the front. Kevin told me everything was here already, I don't know. Okay.
Okay, um. Again, this was committed to the zoning board. They have. Given their approval on it.
And if you're asking, say, make us a bond. I think. None here. Makes sense to me.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the subdivision?
I move that we accept the final subdivision review of eight one three seven Bayless Road to subdivide. Eight one hundred foot by five hundred thirty-six foot from existing lot creating two. Fifty-three thousand square foot lots per survey map.
Second that.
Those, any, any discussion? Am I right? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? There are no opposition, that's been approved. I'll get these signed, Kevin said, I need to hang on. Surveyor will pick these up tomorrow.
Okay, so he is coming tomorrow, I will ensure he is to be interested in us.
Well, I'll get these signed and.
Okay, you're good. I have one quick question, am I getting, am I getting a new number for that new lot or does it not get a number?
You will get a new number, but. That's not our, you'll have to talk to, uh.
Nate, over at the town, right? Nathan Mack, over at the town of Sodas.
Okay, so they'll, they'll sign.
He's the assessor.
The town of Sodas, wow, okay.
So he's the assessor, he must have a book of numbers.
Is that, is that something that happens now or when they're putting a building on it and they've given it to another?
Oh, no, it would happen now. Well, now is sort of, you know, when it happens, but.
Okay.
In the, sooner than later.
Okay, so I need to do that or the surveyor will do that? I have to, okay, so I have to go to the town, talk to, sorry again.
Ethan Mack.
It's right, I go in the town hall.
Yeah.
And before you'll see the assessor's.
Okay, I've been there before, I gotta take a look, I guess, well. My first week here. He's a nice guy. Okay. He's a nice guy.
He's a nice guy, he's capable guy.
Yeah.
You know, when I was first doing the subdivision, I wanted to split the other lot as well, not because I needed to sell it or anything, but. Uh, the second plot, I don't know if you guys know, there's like two properties on it, like a building that gets with a store that they made an apartment with.
Yeah.
Um, the issue that I'm having with the other second building is that my insurance. Will only insure that up to thirty-five thousand. And so there's an apartment there. If I, if there's a fire or something, I will, that's almost nothing to do.
Right.
Rebuild it will. Uh, I know that it would be like a very, so I figured I'd do this first and then start the more difficult process after. Um, but is there any advice or anything that I should?
Well, when you're ready, uh, submit the paperwork.
So where is?
Here, so I think it's lot B on those papers, right?
Okay, there's an existing.
Lot A, there's an existing building, right?
Yeah.
You own both lots, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so in lot B. There's two buildings.
Right.
Yeah. I originally wanted to see if I had the buildings all even straight or whatever. Yeah.
Like that?
Yeah. And I know they're too close and I know that there wouldn't be a hundred yards in front, a hundred feet in front, whatever the, what the requirement is. And for me, it's only just because the insurance, because there's also a second number, because I have eighty one thirty seven and eighty one thirty nine on my paperwork. So I think they did get a second number for that second building, but.
Hmm, oh.
Yeah. Because I, everything that I found in deed, everything says eighty one thirty seven, eighty one thirty nine. And so that's why.
Why doesn't the insurance not want to value?
They can't, they consider it like a garage and so the.
They consider it an ancillary structure as opposed to another, a second primary structure.
Even though it's permanent, it's gonna, permanent everything, they don't, they won't.
Well.
Yeah, I, I try. Different insurance companies do, and they're all giving me kind of the same thing.
We're integrated now.
Yeah, that, that's my only worry about it. Um, you know, there's gonna be other things too, because I think the store or whatever it was permitted as. I don't know if that permit's even around anymore. I'd like to make it residential, but again, this is gonna be a long. You know, uh, process, but I just, for me, the big worry before I put any money into changing whatever's there. Is to make it a separate address so that I can have it different. Better cover, better, not different.
A little better. That makes sense to have it covered.
Yeah.
Yeah, you might.
That, that's the, the little store, so the, it's basically three parts, that little second building on the right. Um, the left side is, uh, a one bedroom apartment that they permitted twenty years back, fifteen years back.
This is.
No, no, and that's, yeah, the one on the left is the main house, yeah.
Okay.
So and then the center part was, I guess, a store, it has a sign that says Blueberry Knoll on it.
Yeah.
So I think they had it as a store or something, this is the second. Yeah, with the second floor loft that, I don't know who allowed that thing to be built, but that is not structurally sound, because I'm an engineer. And then there's a garage to the right of it, uh, with also a kind of a second floor storage loft kind of thing, uh, also not well. Uh, supported, either that I would like to do, but again, I don't wanna put any money into it until I can. Insure it for more than thirty five thousand, which is what the insurance company currently is. Yeah.
The survey that you have, you have a survey? And it shows two addresses?
No.
It does not.
The C O should get it.
It doesn't show.
Just on the survey map that it says it, yeah. Just.
It doesn't show that though?
Yes, it does. Not be a sex up your own references.
Yeah, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Yeah.
The only difference I think between that and I think this is the older map, um, is that, is a growl driveway. And it was a little, little gravel driveway for the front of the main house.
So I don't, I'm, I don't have any experience in this, but I would think that the surveyor would. Question why you had two addresses on your survey, previous surveys and on the documents. And that may be something that Nate would be able to make a new build.
Okay, maybe I'll, I'll ask him.
Yeah.
Good question.
Yeah.
Because right now, the way things are, like I said, my big issue is that I don't have good insurance for that second building.
Yeah.
Especially since I'm living.
And, and this is all part of the property line?
Yeah, it's a big blueberry farm, there's like this bunch of bushes that I don't know how to tend or take care of, but they're there, they sort of grow. I feed all the deer, so, you know. If you're a hunter, you're gonna have a blueberry population this year, because they're, they give off the feather.
Fortunately, you're in the village limits and they can't shoot.
Well, they're everywhere and I'm sure I've fed many, many generations already, so. Uh, all of the blueberries were gone. I, I went one week, they were all great, and then the next week I came back and they were all gone, so. Same thing with my grapes that have grown.
There's no place in the village to see. You do nothing.
You don't need vegetation, let's say.
Yeah.
Well, I got trees, at least I don't reach the top of the trees. With apples and pears, but.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys, thanks, I just wanted advice on what to do with the next step, because I, when I originally talked to Kevin about doing that, he told me that it's gonna require various, a bunch of other steps to.
But I said, when you're ready, uh. Give it to Kevin, submit the paperwork, it would be basically the same process.
So for the various part, do I do that before I hire the surveyor?
Yeah. No, you go to us, then to them, then to us.
Okay.
We could be about run around.
It would be your, your intention to divide it.
Yeah, basically the straight line.
South, basically, okay. Uh, the various would be required because.
They're too close together.
Presumably, yeah, you'd wanna draw the line somewhere there. And both of those structures are gonna be closer than.
Yeah, I think if they had kind of thought about it, they would have built the little apartment on the other side, or at least somewhere else where it wouldn't have been that.
Does a hundred, less than a hundred feet make it substantial? By, by default, or is it total acreage or? No, that, if he were to divide that north to south, roughly in the middle or, or close enough to the middle to be able to. Uh, avoid the, avoid the building lines. He's got fifty three thousand square feet there.
Right.
So he's, uh, it'd be twenty five thousand.
Placement of the building.
Um.
Or, or that end of the build?
Well, that's the finish line, so that, at all, that's the best thing.
That's the key.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know how difficult it's gonna be, but if you're gonna ask any advice, because.
Would, would you? Would you wanna tear that, that appendage down?
That's what he was asking.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, it's a, it's a valid idea, but that's the good side of the building, I'd rather tear the other side, to be honest, you know, if I, if I had to start over.
Tear the whole thing.
Well, that could also be brought about too, uh, because also that side has some crawl space. The other side is on slab, so it's gonna be have a subfloor built. It's, uh, like I said, a good side is the side that's too close, right?
You all, you knew all of this before you bought it, right?
I think you're gonna have a lot of fun with.
Yeah.
Look, I'm not, I don't mind the work, I don't mind going through the steps, I just wanna be compliant, and I figure the easiest way to do it is to figure out what it needs to do with, try to get it done in the right way. Um, you know? If I really hated it, and I don't, I really love it here, actually, um, you know, just a whole thing.
Well, if you were divided in half and then take that, that plan of division, bring it here and then to zoning.
Yeah.
And get an approval for the, for the setback variant is.
So that's the big issue is the setback, another issue was the, uh, the distance between the two parts of the building.
The front, the road frontage.
Uh, I think.
No, he's got plenty of road frontage, just.
Well, no, could I lose a hundred for the, what, A?
Yeah, what you have.
Oh, yeah.
Gotta be two fifty?
Yes, I have enough, yeah.
Yeah, you're good point. Oh, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, it's really more the setbacks.
Yeah, it's more the setback issue.
Yeah.
So maybe I'm getting the terminology wrong, a setback, but distance from the road is also distance from each other?
Well, actually, we were just dealing with the definition of setback earlier.
Because I, I've only ever used it as distance from the road, but it's.
It's, it's a distance from, uh. The road.
Pretty locked to.
Yeah. Property.
To the structure.
So that would be the main issue, is the way the property line would go, if both structures are too close.
You know, for the.
The one would be too close, maybe not the other. How, how close are those two?
Probably fifteen feet, I don't think it's that far. I can fit my car between, so at least, at least the width of a car. Pretty good trucks.
That was a good issue also.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried about, is that that's, you know.
Interesting problem.
Personal problem, right? Oh, no, I can't insure my house for more than it's worth, like.
You, you could move it.
Okay. How?
I, I, I'm not worried with, I mean, I, I do drive by, but I, I don't think any of the details.
Yeah, I mean, it's a good idea also, but.
Not a big, it's not that big, uh, the building eight one three nine?
Uh, it's pretty large, it's one little bit.
It's about these six by twenty, so.
I like the outside of the box thinking though, because I wouldn't have thought of that.
The, um, land to move it a few feet. So he has, he has this two addresses on the building, I see it now. On, on the survey.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's two, they both have different addresses. Yeah, but they didn't split it, which is.
Yeah.
But you can have different addresses on the same. Sure, of course, yeah. Mailing matters, yes.
Also, I only have one mailbox.
Wickham House, we learned, uh, the, the B and B has, it's the same building, and it's got an address on Wickham and it's got an address on. Down or whatever it is over there. They've got two addresses on the same building.
Well, that's the same thing with that store, right? So that middle store is, was permitted as a store at some point. But that permit's gone, but there is no record of it.
So is.
I can reopen it, the, the middle part of that little building, yeah.
Oh, you know.
Okay, so I can reopen it as a permit for that store, so I can't rent it out as a store. And then if I wanna make it residential, I have to make it. Have to go through architects to get it, because it's definitely not structurally sound for that. For somebody on the second floor to live it.
Well, those looks like this used to be. Three lots. Were merged. Looking at the iron post. Splits at, uh, two fifties, like, they have.
Yeah.
It's definitely a huge, huge property. When you said move that second property, I thought you meant move it like north, so that you split it the other way.
Well, I moved that west.
Oh, yeah, the bigger house? The one with the, the full basement. Oh, yeah, that's right. I mean, how, how close is the setback from each other or from the property line?
Twelve and a half feet. Less than substantial, I just wondered. Well, it's twelve and a half feet, it's not substandard, so it's twelve and a half feet, but the other issue is the proximity between the two buildings.
Yeah.
What's the, does it have to be eight feet or ten feet or?
If it's ten, I'm in compliance, it's.
I forget.
Uh, it's just from the property line, if I split it between the two.
Yeah.
Honest, that's an issue for zoning.
Right.
Yeah.
So it is, that might be hurdle, is zoning board or is it?
Yeah.
You come here first, though.
Yeah, come here first.
Just the same thing again.
We, they're say, yeah, we recommend it, or, well, maybe, you know.
The over, yeah, we'll look at the overall. Plan and then.
They decide.
For the zoning, for them to look at the details.
Yeah, because I don't wanna hire the architect and have the building plans and everything set up.
No.
So I get.
Yeah.
It, it, once it's a lot, when I have real insurance, then.
Right.
It's great.
But, uh, uh, it would make sense to investigate, uh. You know, if zoning gives you the blessing.
Where to get changed.
Okay, so read, uh, curl up with, with section one ninety of the, of the code.
Okay.
Okay, when you, when you go to. When you go to the village website. You go to this menu thing here, okay? Go to village government.
Okay.
And then go to forms and documents.
You guys have like one of the best ones, so. Trust me, the last time I was.
And then on reforms and documents, the village codebook. And go down to section one ninety, which is seven.
Okay.
Okay.
And just go through all those on you and see what applies.
Okay, we, we didn't find out what applies.
Yeah.
We'll give Kevin a call and he'll tell you exactly.
Yeah, he's here about that. He made the mistake of giving me his cell phone that first week, I remember. It's awful too, I was like, oh boy, you just, you don't know what you want them to, we're gonna be, uh. All right, everybody, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm sure, well, I'll be back in here. But I, I wanted to get this set up first and then, uh. So the only thing I had to do was talk to Nathan, uh, and Sodas and as soon as possible, and then the architect will take the time and do that. I mean, sorry, the surveyor.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to Highland.
I don't see them.
No.
Kevin's still next door?
Well, he's, uh, I mean, you don't see the. Yeah, and then he sent that, I forgot this.
So I wonder if she didn't know she was on the thing.
Then he says.
I just realized number three on the agenda was blank.
Like, yeah.
But does she have to, do, do they have to present?
Okay.
And they're not here?
No.
No, so maybe.
Hey, did, uh, Highland know that they were on, looking nice?
What, sorry?
Yeah, Highland was not here, uh.
Oh, it's, uh.
Nope.
Okay, um, I'll blink right now and see, uh, he was supposed to get out soon.
All right.
I'll be right back.
Okay.
We may never get.
It's the same as before, I stopped wanting. Nothing has changed when I stopped in and talked to Kevin earlier, because I said the same thing. Make the plans for Highland.
Yes, I like. Uh, first thing I did was check the height.
So nothing's changed, and we did approve it, right? Subjective zoning, zoning approval is.
Uh, zoning. We. Recommended. Uh, based on reducing the height. Zoning, uh. Reinforced, but we had to.
Okay. Got to look up minutes from that.
Hey, Kevin. All right, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
I think thirteen four is. I think, I think it would be turned to have that one. Ben Six.
Uh, Bruce Carey should be headed back to zoning next week. They, uh. From what I'm told, he. Said aside what. The things neighbors have wired. But then, uh, the zoning board, he said, they learned. All the members or their ideas. So, provided out next week.
Uh, saw some lumber got dropped off.
Yeah.
I don't know if it got dropped off or it came out of some of these cells.
Well, they're pretty new. I'm think, they're, they're working on the bar.
Well, where are those work on the bar?
So, and the trusses look pretty big.
Okay.
Uh, that's why I was. I don't think I saw trusses, I think I just saw.
Said.
Some lumber.
Okay, hey, look who there. Uh, unmute yourself, please.
I think I'm muted.
There you go, thank you. All right. Uh, you wanna run over this one more time with us?
So, uh. I'm getting a message from Kevin. Um, yeah, no problem. Uh, so our clients are looking to, uh, rebuild a house, uh, at their current location there on Fourth Street. And I think all the, I don't have the areas right in front of me. But, uh, I think they already went for their, uh, variants and it's, uh, pretty, I think it's a pretty straightforward rebuild. Uh, it's mostly in the same footprint. And taking down a garage and putting up a smaller shed. To help with the square footage.
Hey. Uh. zoning board gave their blessings to this.
Yeah, it was either last week or the week before, I think.
Wha- what's the square footage?
I don't have that map in front of me. Uh, it's all on the, uh. It's all on that, um, plan that we submitted, um.
One thousand five hundred four.
Okay, thank you.
So I believe we're, we're keeping with the same front setback that was before. And, uh, no closer to the front and no closer to a side than what it was.
Our, our minutes stated, um, one thousand five hundred eighty-four, that's what.
That's, I believe that's with the shed.
Yeah, I think, I think included the any square foot shed.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thanks, Thomas. So. I have no questions.
I have none.
Well, it was the idea from the first kid.
None here. No, no questions.
We have the most.
I move that we accept the final site plan for seven, five, eight, six, Fourth Street to construct a. One thousand five hundred and four square foot, single family structure with an eighty square foot shed per thought drawing on existing footprint. Allowing thirty-five percent lot coverage where thirty percent is allowed.
I'll second that.
Big discussion?
Well, if we go back to the drawing that was submitted for our meeting back on the sixth, it says fifteen eighty-four on the drawing.
It's a fifteen eighty-four on the square.
Then it, it must include that, that appendage shed, okay? And so it's. I don't know if we should say fifteen oh four or fifteen.
I said fifteen oh four plus an eighty.
Plus an eighty square.
Okay.
She's.
Thanks for that thing.
I agree with the thing.
No further discussion. Thank you.
All right, we, we had a motion, we had a second. All those favors, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? There are no opposition. It's approved. Congratulations.
Hey, thanks, guys. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
But.
Thanks for zooming me in.
Okay. And. I will again apologize. Uh, it was just a crazy week. I. Didn't get my agenda out and didn't get minutes out.
It all worked just fine.
I am not gonna be here on the seventeenth.
All right. As long as I got, that would be two other people.
If I need to zoom in, I can. I'll be in National Park or outside of Washington DC. But. I can get the address to.
Our flight is supposed to get picked us back at two thirty, but, uh, you know, if the air traffic controllers aren't working that day.
It's down to two people.
We'll wait. He's coming back. I'll be.
I'm coming from the west, you're going east, right? Or south, I guess.
And I, 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 I'm good for two weeks from the, uh, so, about two weeks from today. It'd be.
One to the seventeen. Yeah.
Eighteenth.
I mean, I can send.
But, uh, like I said, as long as I got three people. We have some, we know.
How about Alan? Do you know whether Alan's available or not?
Well, she is. Hopefully it'll be well before then.
Oh, she'll?
She, uh, simply a voice text.
Oh.
Uh, so. Take care of yourself. Get well.
Just got.
We don't want you here.
Yeah.
Uh. I will be. Out and down for our second meeting on the seventh. Actually. Like, you know, I'll be returning that day.
Oh.
For. Irrigation conventions and door loads.
Oh, that's fun.
Awesome.
So go down some of that and then. I'll shoot over to Pensacola. And see, mess it up, let's come back from there.
He didn't even want to carry your suitcase, let me know. He didn't even want to carry your suitcase, let me know.
As long as you like jazz.
I turned, I turned into a snowbird on the twenty-fourth. Of December?
November.
November. You're crazy. I don't know, there's lots of twenty-fours out there.
Well, I'm telling you, they don't go down until February. Well, by the way, if anybody utilizes our hurdle. For repairs, he is not selling. He's forwarded off to Parker. Oh, he's decided he. Gonna stay and they'll have to bury him in the back.
Okay, then.
Now he, he discovered the joys, you know, of stairlifts.
Of stairlifts?
Do you need a motion to adjourn?
I was hoping.
So moved.
All those favors, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Okay, somebody's gonna have to cancel this.